I don't know what that is.
I do.
Ready? Call the media board at five thirty. Everybody wants to write for the pledge allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Chuck, if you want to do a roll call.
Crossan.
Here.
Mash, here, Kiner, here, Schneider.
Here.
Boots.
Here.
Hughes. And Nubron. We have a forum.
Everybody have a chance to look over the minutes from last one.
I have one question on a very last paragraph refers to the LaPierre Community Health Project. And it's listed after we adjourn.
Oh.
Should probably be.
I'll second it, Rob. I'll second it. Hi, do we have anybody for?
For movement?
Keith, Kristen, Edge. I'll second it. Oh, you want to do a roll call, both? Or the? No, what did you, how did you want us to present?
We need to vote on it.
On the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, Alan, David, sorry.
Hi.
Hi. All right, anybody for public time? All right, we'll put on the new business. I'll say Henry before Ross Automotive. Is there anybody here for Ross Automotive? What's your first name?
Chris.
Chris. Hello, Chris. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Some of the materials you submitted with your application show a carport, stout metal building.
Okay.
Will that have full side walls or just a top?
No, it's full side walls.
My other question, right behind your privacy fence, you've got a fair kind of open excavated area with a container next to it. Is that going to be a foundation for that container?
No.
No?
Well, that, that's just a, that, they're just a container there.
Okay, what's the whole for?
That's what we're gonna put, we're gonna set the container there on, on some blocks while it's sitting there.
That has nothing to do with this.
That has nothing to do with that one.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. We just put the container in there until we can get this done, so we have somewhere to put the stuff where we can't, we don't have room for.
Will that be strictly storage?
Yes.
So, do you have any questions, Marvin? Am I against your lands? Am I against your lands?
Is the entire property parking lot?
Is the entire property? All, all in front of the building is parking lot, and then on the side lot there where the fence and stuff is, is all parking lot now.
All the way to the drop off of that, to the floodplain?
Yes, currently, so it's gonna be at the back of the parking lot there.
How far back does the property go?
As far as from the road?
No, from the buildings. They don't show setbacks and rear setback on the building.
Um, I believe the property goes quite a bit into the floodplain, so I'm not sure exactly where the property line ends there. I don't have anything that shows that, but I know it's past where it drops off.
It should have a rear dimension. From, from the. From the building, from the building to the rear property line, the setbacks. It appears as though the east side of the proposed building is about a hundred feet back from the road. It's marked a hundred and two. And I, I know the property goes quite a ways back. Still should sell out of the site plan.
I know we had a site plan from when we had the building built, ten years ago, and it's, you know, at the big drawings that they ended up, and that doesn't have anything on there, so I don't know what to go by, but, um, I, I know it goes quite a ways back.
Just do your votes again.
Which one do you want the schedule regulations?
Schedule regulations. C one?
Well, I believe they're C two.
C two? Either one.
Mm-hmm.
Either one. I, I mean, it's, it's. I don't know the right word. Minimum required setback to the rear lot line is twenty feet.
I, I know it's at least a hundred.
But this doesn't show that.
Yeah, I know.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm not sure where I can get that dimension, even when they did the ones to the building, they didn't have that on there.
If you, okay, if we know it's a hundred and some odd feet, if you put a hundred feet plus, okay.
Okay.
It, it's, I mean, it's a detail.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, it comes down, all of a sudden we find out the property line's only ten feet back there, then, you know, this is, this is wrong, so. It appears as though it was supposed to go to mention here, it's not there. Probably clipped. That's the same over here.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
I was, I was actually gonna say something to you. So, are you asking that, that information to be penciled in, and it would otherwise be complete with that information? Uh, I'm just saying that's information that is missing, and, uh, if this is approved.
Right.
Then it can be added in on the approved set and initial. Is it otherwise, uh, complete, in your opinion? Well, if, if you look at the checklist for, uh, site plan review, um, no, I, I mean, I don't, I, I think if you, if you. There's a, there's a two-page checklist of information, um, scale of one inch equals fifty feet. Dimensions of the property. Notation of direction for north, legal description, property, so I mean, if, if you look at the, the checklist, then, no, it's, 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 in my opinion, it's not complete. So, the option would be, um, to deny it on the basis that it's incomplete, or to postpone, uh, until it's complete, or they could move to approve it such as it is. Is that, uh, the, the options as you see them?
Correct.
So, I guess the rest is up to you.
So, this is in addition to the original site plan, which can be pulled out, um, it's here. And this is a put-together kit?
Yeah.
Like type building?
Yeah.
The type of building doesn't, but with that, okay, then, taking of the three options, should you make the motion to approve it, that needs to be in the motion, that this is in addition to the original site plan, which is on file. So, it does raise questions. Do you have a recommendation otherwise?
Well, that's what it says on the, uh, it's in addition to the site plan, and the next one is also in addition to the original site plan.
Well, I, I, I mean, yeah, my recommendation is, is to fill in those, it's, it's, get us, especially put those dimensions on here, on, on the official. The one that's gonna be kept, I mean, everybody can put it on their own copies, um, and with that in mind, I mean, I, yeah, I don't, uh, I don't see, uh, I don't see your own blocks. So, of those options that I mentioned, a motion to approve, um, subject to that additional information being completed, would be one appropriate motion. Another would be a motion to deny on the basis that you feel it's incomplete, um, or third, a motion to postpone until, uh, a complete packet, uh, could be submitted, one of those three motions, any one of them would be appropriate, as you see fit.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the addition to site plan for Ross Automotive, eighteen thirty-three North Saginaw. Do you want the first ID number?
Uh, I have.
Have you got it?
Yeah. With the corrections.
Yep, they can add that clip on to this one.
This is how I wrote it, motion by Crossan, second by Mash, to approve the Ross site plan with corrections to the submitted plan. Complete the full site plan requirements as listed on the site plan checklist.
Um, I think he just needs the setback.
This is.
That's what my motion is, the, the rear setback.
The dimension requirements?
Yep.
Hey, Chris, you were seconding that motion, understanding?
Yes.
To approve the lot for our site plan with corrections to the submitted plan, complete the dimension. On the site plan.
I was waiting for him to scut right, is there any dis, anybody, any discussion on that?
To approve the Ross site plan with completion of the dimensions on the plan.
Yep. Ross Automotive, the proper name Ross Automotive. Yep.
Got that elsewhere, correct?
Tommy?
Good with that? Yes, sir.
Oh, oh, that's, roll call, roll.
Crossan?
Yes.
Mash?
Yes.
Kiner?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Boots?
Yes.
And two absent. Five eyes, motion carries. Excuse me. Okay, just.
Sorry. That's all, that, that will cover them. Okay.
So, everything will be sent to construction code, so you'll be able to start the budget, um, over the next month.
Okay. All set then?
We're all set with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to the second, uh, order of new business addition to site plan for LaPierre Manufacturing. Is there anybody here for LaPierre Manufacturing?
I'm Rick Nubron, surveyor for the project.
Okay. Hello?
I'm applying contractor.
And is this cold storage as well, or a stor, a, a storage building, right? You guys were here a few years ago, or they were here a few years ago.
It's getting in the building.
Not too long ago. The family, right?
Yes, and that, that didn't get completed, called the check and.
Okay.
That's this one, right?
Yeah.
Do you have any others like this?
Um, I wait, I can, uh, forward.
Lonny, any thoughts on this, on this document?
Um, no, actually, this one is, uh, very nice, um, that's why I grabbed this, um, these, these are nice to look at if you've got a magnifying glass or, you know, you know, for individual, but for official, this is, I mean, you're, they're showing, um, and this one actually has the checklist included, and, uh, everything's marked off as far as being completed, so.
Any recommendations on this one?
I, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, I, I would recommend approval, what's presented.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, a motion would be in order, and?
Motion is approved.
That's Chris presenting.
I'll second it.
We have motion by Mash, second by Crossan, to approve the LaPierre Manufacturing Site Plan as presented. Our cylinders are as well.
Any discussion, guys?
Crossan?
Yes.
Mash?
Yes.
Kiner?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes. Booth?
Yes.
This is our copy? We have five eyes, two absent, motion carries.
You guys are all set. Gotta also be there tomorrow. You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Jody? Are those your construction drawings? Yeah, they're, we'll have the sealed drawings from. I'll give you a couple, you might as well take those with you. Okay.
Yeah, I asked if I could do that first, because you should do it anyway.
Okay.
So, we're gonna close it, open it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, and then open.
Yeah.
Okay. You ready, Chuck? Let's close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the special land use for twenty-seven forty-six Fish Lake Road, the gasoline service station. I could afford. All right, do we have any discussion on the special land use? Is anybody here for David?
Yes.
We should make his presentation first.
Do you have anything to say for the special land use? Do you have any public comment, Liza?
I just had a, a question or two for clarification, just for my own self, because I think I misunderstood. When the property was rezoned to C two, was that just the property where the market is, or was that the property where the market is, and then there, isn't there a vacant lot to the south? I'm confused about what was rezoned to C two.
I'd have to look back in those minutes to see.
The property of the south is not in question tonight.
I guess that's, you know, I guess that's the reason I was asking.
Oh, no, I understand, yeah, no, I understand what you're asking, just the original proposal was to put the pumps on that property, and since that's changed, did that property, did, did that get combined as one unit, one parcel, or is it two separate parcels?
That's two.
It's two separate parcels?
Yes.
Okay, so, and, and so again, that parcel is not involved in this. Okay, so, and so again, that parcel is not involved in this.
Okay.
So in other words, the special land use would not even apply to that south parcel that you, that you're talking about.
Okay, so was the other parcel rezoned C2, or was it still left in what's...
I'd have to look back in the minutes. We'd have to look back in the minutes.
Okay, but it doesn't apply to today because the plan doesn't include it.
Doesn't, it doesn't, yeah. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Kyle Powers, 2699 Fish Lake Road. So, I'm gonna start off with saying C2 businesses, according to our township's master plan, are meant for M24, not in the heart of a small residential neighborhood like ours. The board should have never approved this property in the first place and should have listened to the people directly impacted, rather than relying on opinions from those who don't live nearby. And also, the original property was approved C2 by the board under the impression that it was on that other property, not where he's planning to put it now. So I'll just put that in there too, I highlighted that in my notes here that I'm gonna give to you guys. The development is not the pleasant addition some outsiders have claimed it to be. We have real environmental concerns, stormwater runoff, fuel fumes, and the risk of soil and well contamination, especially with state-owned land and links close by. Furthermore, it has been used as a pro in the past board meeting that voters could use the gas station for lakes in the area, yet every lake in the area is non-motorized, making that argument completely irrelevant. Likewise, Fish Lake Road is not a legal causeway for UTVs unless they are fully equipped with turn signals, headlamps, license plates, and insurance. Otherwise, they must stay on designated UTV compliant rows, and I've provided a map of that here as well. We also cannot ignore the fact that the dragway is less than two miles away. There are speeding issues in the area already. This gas station will only let, will only add to the danger. From the start, the approval process has lacked transparency. The developer even delayed an earlier commission meeting claiming confusion, while the board's notices to the public have been piecemealed and last minute at best. Finally, I want to remind you that the planning commission originally voted this proposal down six to one because it was not a good fit for a small residential area like ours. I urge you to stand by that decision, listen to the people, this will directly affect, and protect the community that you were appointed to serve. Thank you. And I'll give you all the information if you want to go over it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else?
My name is Nancy Powers, 2699 Fish Lake Road, and this is regarding the special approved. This decision impacts our, on our health, our water, our safety, and our right to live in a community that follow its own rules. Every home in our neighborhood relies in on well water. A gas station will introduce benzene, a proven carcinogen, into the air and into the ground that supplies those wells. Research shows that benzene emissions can travel as far as 518 feet, which means there is no safe distance unless it is supported by credible data. This is not a hypothetical risk, it is a serious public health concern. Noise alone for late-night operation can, car washes and increased traffic requires a minimum of 300 feet of separation from homes, according to the community and environmental defense services. However, 300 feet is not enough to protect our health. This same organization, backed by scientific studies, recommend a minimum of 500 feet between gas station and homes, schools, lakes, and daycare centers to reduce the risk of harmful emissions and contamination. Many communities in Indiana, Illinois, Utah, and Florida are already implementing these standards and succeeding. In certain areas, the safe distance can be as much as 1,000 feet, especially in dense or environmental sensitive locations. This proposal does not align with our township's master plan and ignores what science tells us about public health. I request that the proponents of this project be required to produce a site-specific independent impact with study that details both the benefits and the risks, along with clear measures to ensure safe offer, protect, protect public health, and safeguard the environment. Our wells, our air, our air, our lakes, and our children's health are at stake. This cannot be decided based on convenience or preference, it must be based on facts and the long-term safety of our communities. And I do have the sources, I one printed like the pages that I, that I read into it that you can go through and look on all of the stories that they have. Oh, okay, sorry. And this is the map to show, like, this is the scale, and this is how 500 feet will be and how close it will be for our neighborhood and our houses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public time? Any concerns, Lonny?
You want to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll close the pub, sorry about that. We'll close the public hearing at 6:03 with special land use and reopen the regular meeting. Now, is there any discussion?
Lonny, any thoughts initially? By the ordinance, gas stations are allowed in the C2 district. Even though the planning commission recommended that the property not be rezoned, the board disagreed and rezoned it, so it is C2. And under the zoning ordinance, a special land use is required for a gas station. Now, why a special land use and not used by right? Used by right means, if it's a used by right, like party store or whatever is used by right, they don't need special approval, they don't need special conditions. With a special land use, you can approve it as, you can, I'll go to Mike's comments. You have three choices. You can deny it. You can approve it, or you can postpone it to another, another meeting. If you deny it, you have to have a real good reason to deny it, because it's allowed in the ordinance as a special land use. The reason for a special land use, if you want to put special requirements, you can't. Where used by right, you can't. Used by right, they can just go ahead and do what's allowed. Where this, you can put special requirements on it, on the special land use. You may want to expand on that. I was hoping to, so, the, your zoning ordinance tells you what you should be talking about and looking at in terms of whether you approve this or deny it, or whatever it is that you wish. And there are eight elements involved. For those of you who don't have your books, the first is, will it be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objective of the future land use plan? And I should say that if, if your motion is to approve or deny, you should be citing some of these, that you feel it is or you feel it isn't. Number two, will, it will be designed, constructed, operated, maintained in harmony with existing and intended character of the general vicinity, and so that such use will not change the essential character of the area. Awkwardly worded, but, will not be hazardous or detrimental to existing or future neighborhood, neighboring uses. Four, will represent a substantial improvement to property and immediate vicinity and general benefit to the community as a whole. Five, will be served adequately by essential public services and facilities such as highways, streets, drainage structures, police and fire protection, and refuse disposal, or persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately for such services. Six, will not create excessive additional requirements of public cost for public facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. Seven, will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive smoke, fumes, glare, noise, vibration, or odors. Eight, will be consistent with the intent and purposes of this ordinance. Those are the standards. So, it would not be appropriate, for example, to say that you would, you turned this down because you don't think it should be C2. It is C2, whether you like it or not, that is a basis. These then are the standards that you should be referring to one way or another as you go through your motion and discussion.
My thought kind of me, I was, this is really nothing new because it was a gas station right there for 100 years without issues. I understand they want to close because the very most people wanted him to dig up all of his tanks and replace them on the port, too, so they just closed it down. So I don't, I'm not seeing where there's anything really new here.
And, and how, if I may ask? In, Joy, I don't know if you can open your book to 1602. But how what you're saying fits into any of those eight criteria?
Well, I have not heard of any issue with the, with the gas station. Sorry. Fit in. I don't, I don't see where there's an issue with any of these.
So you're saying that in your opinion, they satisfy those, those standards?
I think so.
Does anyone else have any opinions? So again, the options would be a motion to approve on the basis that you feel as though the standards mentioned in 1602.4 are met, for A, 1 through 8. A motion to deny on the basis that one or some combination of those standards you feel are not met. And there could be a motion to postpone, but ordinarily that's done because it's incomplete, not because you just want to kick the can down the road.
Mr. Gellner?
Yes.
I have several questions that relate to the standards that Attorney Gellner just went through. Currently, your operating hours are 10 to 9 most days, 10 to 10 on Friday, Saturdays, is that correct?
Yes.
If this is approved, would those operating hours change?
No, not, I'm gonna just open early couple of hours, that's it. But that, my time at night is gonna be the same time. Yes.
So you're not, you're not going to like a 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. to fuel up people on their way to work?
It's gonna be every day tonight.
Okay.
9:00 a.m.
Okay.
That, that's closing time?
Yeah. I close at like sometime, I close 8:30.
You gotta, you gotta direct questions here. But you're, you're saying that you close every, pretty much every night at 9:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Also, along with the standards, talks about in harmony with the general vicinity. The canopy, regarding your drawings, have, have lights that point straight down. They're recessed into the canopy. The, the canopy over the pumps?
Yes.
The lighting, to light the pump area?
Yep, yep, yep.
They, they shoot straight down?
They're gonna be closing at 1:00 on the door.
Okay, so the lights will be off when your bill, when your business is closed?
Yes.
Okay, so nighttime light penetrating the neighborhood wouldn't be an issue?
Nope. Yep, the light, they, they, the light they're gonna close, soon as I'm gonna shut the door. Yep.
On the south side of the building, you have lights to say, huh?
It's a site plan.
That's a site, that's a site plan. We're on the special land use.
Something we want to include as a condition of this building is special land use.
There's no, there's no reason to, to leave them on, because I got camera. Yep.
I have a question. Right now, the lights go...
Or it's, public time is over.
Oh, okay.
Chuck, did you have any other questions? Could you have any other questions for the special land use?
One more comment. Even though it was master plan that C1 that was designed for neighborhood-type businesses, his business has been there for a number of years as a retail store and pizza and available liquor and so forth. It powered in a couple pumps for gas, which would be in keeping with a neighborhood-style gas station as opposed to a fuel stop like Beacon and Bridge or, or one of the gas stations in the area that are all on major roads.
Exactly, it's not gonna be truck stop. It's only a couple of pump, help, help my business and help my community do. That's all.
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use. 2746 Fish Lake Road.
For the reasons stated on the record?
Yes.
Lonny, just give me the numbers of which ones the standards are, maybe you can fill that in.
1602.
That's a specific standard?
No, no, I don't think you need to go through each and every one of them, but you should, you should, that's your, your guidepost, those are your standards, so. Jamie, you, you made the motion? Is there anything that you wish to say about 1602 or any of those standards?
No.
Do you feel as though they're, they're met?
Yes.
Good to read.
Right there.
Motion by, motion by Preston, second by Boots, to approve the special land use for 2746 Fish Lake Road. I didn't have the parcel ID number. Having met the standards in section 16...
I didn't have the parcel ID number, having met the standards in section 1602, paragraph 4.
Joy, are you okay with that?
Okay with that.
Do a roll call?
Crossan?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Snyder? Schneider?
Yes.
And five, yes, to add some motion carries.
No, to the next order of business, the state land review, 2746 Fish Lake Road.
Lonnie, any thoughts as to completing this?
Again, with this one, the checklist is included. So, hopefully we had a opportunity to go right down it and verify that. Because the majority of the properties existing, so there'd really be almost two areas in question. One is the front, where the canopy with the three pumps will be located. And the other is, if you notice on the north end of the building, the Verda Road, there's a racing fuel pump, rec fuel. A lot of stations used to have kerosene pumps, and now it's... So that's one separate pump. Storage tanks are all on the left end of the building. Underground storage tanks. And like Joy mentioned, previous owner, going back a few orders, they took the pumps out because the state required updated storage. And they didn't want to put the money into it. The tanks, back then, they were basically just burying tanks. No protection or nothing. Now, and this is all, all the gas and storage and all the, the gas station portion is regulated by the state's Department of Agriculture. You go to a gas station, you see a sticker on the pump, Department of Agriculture sticker, and that has to have their certification. So, that's a, but as far as the site plan, to me, it's complete. Now, Chuck had mentioned the lighting, hours of operation. Here's where you direct those. And you can set those as far as your light to... What do they call that? Pre-off properties?
Yeah.
So if we include hours of operation, we can give numbers?
You can accept his...
Now, you can't tell me these can be open 9:00 to 5:00. I mean, reasonable business hours for a gas station, part of the summer.
And that would stay with whether this gentleman owns the property or the business or not?
Runs with the land.
Yes. Do you guys have any concerns about any of the lighting or hours?
My question was the lighting on the south side of the building? There's a light pack over there that's on all night or anything? There's nothing on here about that lighting. That faces the residential. That's a full sign for the evening, yes, that's. And that's the asking, because there's nothing, what lighting? There's no lighting on the south side?
No lighting on the south side of the building?
Not by your door over on that side or anything, a light pack? So I think earlier, David, what they were talking about is the lights, when they're on, are they going to illuminate this way or this way? I don't, I don't know if anybody else has an issue with...
Yeah, it spells it out.
Okay.
That they're aiming down, way back to the three foot candlelight, or candles.
I see you have a green belt that's in the back. Chuck, do you have any concerns?
The green belt on the east side is quite thick. From front of the house, just the other side of the green belt, you can't even see that there's a building there. I do have two concerns. There are 14 parking spaces shown, plus a handicap space, which means the 15 that are required. By moving the dumpster from the north side of the building to the south edge of the parking lot, a dumpster would make it difficult to get in and out of that last spot, the spot to the east.
We can move the dumpster.
Move the dumpster back a little bit, we'll take care of that. The other area, most of your parkers, most of your customers now park either along the front of Fish Lake Road, or they pull up perpendicular to the building. One of the spaces that would face the building is pretty close and would probably block access to the pumps that are between the pump and the building. It's pretty tight in there. The drawing shows 21 feet, and having to make kind of an S-turn to get in there. Is there a way you could open that up a little bit so that if someone's parked in that last spot, people can access the pumps between the building and the pumps?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can't put more parking this side. Yep.
I'm just seeing that here and saying, well, that's gonna be pretty tight if you guys want to be parked there.
We can do something.
Will you be taking out the light bulb that's in front of the building?
Yes.
Does the canopy will be in the way?
Yes.
Okay. Let it sit, continue down the plan.
Do you have any concerns about hours of operation?
I think we can specify that.
I'm thinking that.
When you specify that the lights go off when the building's closed. Like you said, unless he leaves one or two on for security.
I think you have to have some sort of security.
You know, if you say it's got 12 lights in the canopy, you leave two on for security.
The lights?
Just to have the security, but you're not lighting up the neighborhood.
We have to get a motion light too.
He said he's got cameras, so they work at night as well, real good. He said he's got head cameras, he says.
How early are you looking to be open in the morning?
5:00 or 6:00.
When you're talking hours of operation, that's an excellent point with the lights. Many stations now offer 24 hours of gas. You can pull into a gas station, get gas 24 hours a day, even though they're not open. You pay with your credit card and you get gas. I would make sure that's not... I shouldn't say it that way. I would recommend you not allow that. And specify, specify it at the most.
The motions that we discussed with the other two, are the same motions available to you on this one as well? This one, you can, as you could before, attach conditions as part of your motion.
Well, I would make a motion to approve that the lights and pumps will be on for hours of operation.
What hours? Say 5 or 6 to 9 o'clock, is what he said. I'm just trying to, that's what he said.
Quarter of the hours again?
Either 5 to 9, or 6 to 9.
5 AM to 9 PM, or 6 AM to 9 PM.
Which do you prefer?
5.
Joy, would that also include moving the dumpster so as not to block any parking spaces?
I think, is that gonna be your motion? Or, I'm sorry, Joy. I think 5 is early.
Too early?
I think so. I'd say 6 to 10. I've lived by a gas station before, and I never had an issue with it, but... 5 is...
Are you okay with that? I don't think there's been a second, but if you're okay with it, then that can be incorporated.
10 o'clock is the noise work as well.
Is there a second?
I did. Joy, Joy.
Open the gas station right next to your office.
The public time is over.
I'm here.
Okay.
Do you second it? Ray.
Yes.
Motion by Crossan, second by Mash, to approve the presented site plan with the following conditions. Hours of operation, 6 AM to 9, to 10 PM. Canopy lights must be off when closed. Gas is only offered when the business in the building is open. Parking space location must be moved to accommodate the dumpster and pump access. And that can be necessarily approved.
I think Joy made the motion, and then are they moving the dumpster or the parking space?
Well, this parking space.
Right, yeah.
Boots made the motion.
Yes.
Boots?
Yes.
Got it. Chris seconded it. Want it again?
No, I think we got it.
Everybody good?
Do a roll call.
Crossan?
Yes.
Right now? Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Boots?
Yes.
Five, yes, to add some motion carries.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. It's 6:33. Now, in favor?
I.
I feel your pain, Kyle, I've had very early hours too.
Good, Mike, how are you?
Hanging in there, hanging in there.
Good, Mike, good. Yeah, but you... I'm a schlau, I'm not really a schlau. My dad's daughter, that's a schlau. Right? Yeah? Yeah. My mom's gonna be 9:05 next week. I know, I've had something.